Alright, we're continuing this meeting to work on the budget and if needed we can actually vote to pass the budget. So we'll begin, I think, last time we were working with Lee, is that when we finished the other day?
We got approved of that one.
But I mean, I think we still had some questions because of-
He's still, he's not gonna get that money, so we need to come up with him some money.
Yeah. I think we're ready to move to 911, is that right?
We got done 911.
We did?
Did we approve, what did we approve in 911 there?
The only thing you have to decide on right now is whether you're gonna approve our additional employee, which we have a reservation for that. That is page 910.
Let's do this, let's sort of go over each budget, just to say yay or nay, so that way we'll know when we start to approve something, we'll know what we're gonna approve across. I know we gotta go back and visit the engineer's office-
And maintenance?
And maintenance and I think the only one that we're pretty close on is Joyce's budget, revenue conditions.
Sheriff and jail, we should be pretty close, the only one, sheriff is the additional employee.
So all those agents, if we were sort of keep that, and we know that the amount that you got set up for 911 is not, because they're only moving a part-time worker to a full-time worker.
Well, what her budget narrative says is she's moving a part-time to a full-time and a supervisor, that's what it says.
That's the one that we already have.
Okay, you already have that?
That one of the girls that's already been here would be new to that nighttime supervisor. Which, she talked about that last year, but we just did the daytime, we just did one training admin person, she'd like fucking a night, somebody that oversees nights yet.
So she's wanting two new employees?
Not two new, no, one that we already have would apply for that training admin position.
She moved an employee, moving a regular employee to supervisor and then a part-time to a full-time.
Okay, so we did, that person you talked about, it's already full-time?
Yes.
And then the biggest thing we're doing is moving that part-time to a full-time.
Part-time to a full-time, you're giving some real raise.
Yeah, basically, and anybody even chooses to pay ahead.
So you're giving up the part-time, we're not gonna refill the part-time?
No, we, that's the only part-time we have left anywhere it was, we had given up one part-time position back years ago.
So we're not, so we're turning, so each time we just-
We have part-time temporary, which gets no benefits, no retirement, no anything, and they're-
But this is the last, this is the last part-time person we have, and you will have, everybody will be full-time.
Yeah, yes, that's it, that's correct, and trying to keep the people that we have, because we can't signify any of the others.
So how many people you gonna have back there on the day shift?
Um, well-
If this happens, I mean-
Yeah, that, it would still be the same, that part-time position that we have, that if it goes to full-time, they would be a backup, all over the board person, they would be a person for- Because, I mean, that's why we hired the part-time temporary is for covering vacations, sick time, short call-ins, that kind of thing. And when you have eight people with full benefits, then it's a life, and so that person would take that position knowing that they would be on-call, they would have to come in. Because now we struggle with part-time, when they're hired, they know what's expected, trust me, they know, but then all of a sudden, they decide they can't work those days.
But this person you're hiring will be working in shifts too, they'll be also working their-
Yes, yes.
So you didn't answer my question, how many people are back there on a daytime shift?
Oh, two.
So one of them people that's back there now is part-time?
No, well, right now, yeah, yeah, he's, yeah, because somebody's off, and we, somebody's usually always off.
So at times, you got three people back there?
Well, if there's training, if we have somebody training. And if there ended up being, if there ends up being not, that person's already working 30 hours a week, so it wouldn't be that many more hours, but- She said she could use them in a position where they do any kind of backup GIS, because GIS is getting, yeah, it's a lot. And we, I've been going out and just going around the county trying to update our mapping system, because we have so many new builds. And we don't know anymore, anything about that, we give them an address and that's the end of it, we don't hear back from anyone, we don't know any description, or if a house was even placed there, or anything like that. Because nobody, we used to get that updated by our phone system, when everybody had a landline, but now we don't have a landline, so we don't get any updates on any properties in the county. But anyway, just that kind of thing, and then just doing any kind of, mainly they would be covering, mainly they would be covering, just because we are, you know, if somebody's out or sick.
So if we create this job, then there's gonna be three back there on day shift and three on night shift?
No, no.
Well, I'm confused.
Because the night shift person, I mean, yeah, no, that person, it would be pretty much doing what they're doing now, but they would have it added, they would have benefits. So they would be expected to have their weekends, nights, holidays, because we cannot get anybody that is willing to do that on part-time. So we, if one person were to leave us right now, you would have one on back there at some points in time.
I mean, I understand that, but-
So they would not be-
You got, you got two full-time people back there, one is running, both of them screen, right?
Yeah, we have two full-time people on-
Okay, and you want a part-time person, which if both are full-time, which were there, she's just gonna do busy work.
Well, they're GIS mainly, and that, and mapping, and that kind of thing, there wouldn't be any time where they would have anything to do, in other words.
Is it the same thing on that shift, you got the two people, then you got a third?
That person would be, no, no.
This person would be night or day?
Nights, days, weekends, holidays, everything, because when I first came here, we only had four full-time positions, so it wasn't a big deal, we had four part-time, it wasn't a big deal to cover those full-time vacations and sick time and all that, because we only had four with benefits, now we have eight people with benefits. And part-time, they pretty much mandate what they're gonna work.
But-
Because if we don't, if we don't comply with that, we lose them.
But if it's a have-to, you and Chris will come to it?
Well, yeah, we had to, but I mean, I don't, I mean, like she said, we had all weekends, I mean, I am on-call 24/7, and I, there's not one weekend it goes by I don't get called. Now, and, yeah, it's, yeah. Anyway, she's trying to keep people, she's trying to make it a position where they will be willing to work what they're told they have to work when we first hired them. The last two people we tried to hire did not show up on the day that they were supposed to start work, they came to two interviews and took the job, but then they didn't show up.
That's pretty much it for now.
Oh, I know, but 911 is different than the gap or whatever, I mean, 911, if we don't have somebody, and it takes so long to train them, and then our, you know, I'm not even-
Okay, well, we're gonna start on page seven and go through before we go to- Because this is the three-point hour, right?
This is hopefully the one.
So the change, does the mapping one? Alright, you wanna lead the way?
I can do that, um, my budget look hasn't changed very much, other than just I added, used the shaded line there, all I did was add in part of the generator battery, our portion of the mountain chair expense, the EDF generator battery that Crystal talked about. The only other thing that I did change was I changed line 113, I changed that to include, and make sure that all of our employees in my department that are currently here are covered by that number. So if you wanna do something different with that, we'll, we'll talk about that, but other than that, mine's pretty cut and dry, it's not a whole, there's not a whole lot of changes on any of the lines.
The difference on that one is the financial officer?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's, that's what increased that, because the finance officer. Okay, and then of course, if you just wanna go into judges, do you wanna do that one, Brian, the next line? There's really no changes, other than, the only thing that would've changed is if utilities had gone up or if insurance had gone up, and it was covered last time, so I'm looking the same.
So the number on that one, okay, as we go, I gotta sign off on this, we're going with recommended 25?
23.5.
On county administrator's budget.
Oh, the insurance budget, that's the-
That's, we're going with that line item recommended.
The recommended by 25, far behind?
Not requested, but recommended.
Recommended, that's right.
That's what I'm, I'm just wanting to make sure I sign off.
Yes, yes, recommended, absolutely.
Anybody got any questions about that? Okay.
Oh, oh, judges, how come this line just jumped so much, what was that?
Didn't they have to add that, uh-
You wanted to get computers?
Yeah, for line and chair and desk.
That's not, that's not, that's-
This is a judge, this is a chair.
Oh, yeah, so, we're looking at, where it said, uh, part-time.
Trying to remember what that went up for, um-
It went up, what?
I was trying to remember that myself, let me see if I can see, 'cause I've changed so many things over time, so there was a reason for that.
This line is, went up to gas, went up-
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
That's, that's the-
Utilities went and go up, that's-
Is there, yeah, 'cause they share, they also share that gas down at the storage space too, don't they, they have a storage space down there, don't they, Fred?
Yes, circuit clerk does, yes, not your judges, use the circuit clerk.
Circuit clerk.
I'm looking, I'm looking at what was spent last year on that 199 line, that miscellaneous line, we probably leave it down at 175.
I mean, that- I'm just looking at this, it's a big dent, I mean, that's triple.
Yeah, and you're right, it doesn't look like that should actually be that, I think I may have been looking at the janitorial line. There was, there was some spent on janitorial, and they didn't have a line for that, so I think that's what I did, so I included that with their 199 line. But we can add a janitorial line for their portion, if you, we did that, but they just spent $762 on that, so I think that's what I did, was I added it to that miscellaneous line.
I misspoke about the gas, it was a telephone that almost fell.
Right, and it happens, I mean, there's not, what I showed that had been spent in the first nine months was about $900, so that's why I took up $800 with the rest of the prior year.
Okay.
And I did that, we either need to live in, leave miscellaneous at 850, or we need to add a line for cleaning janitorial supplies, one of the two, either one is the same.
You looked, which way is long?
It's just like, we'd like this.
So the janitorial supplies for the judges?
They share with the rest of the-
Alright, so you, I'm actually start pulling that out, okay.
Yep.
So we go back to the APT, and that's where that's going, janitorial?
Yes, no, I'll put that, okay, um-
So we good on this?
It says yes, that's what I put in.
And you got circuit clerk.
Circuit clerk is, like I said, I look at the expenses from end of the year, and it stayed within that range, so I left that one at 920, so that's recommended amount.
So why aren't they staying at 50 bucks on miscellaneous?
No, that would use very much, their portion is just not that much. Okay, um, everybody's up here with circuit clerk, the district attorney didn't change. And then court reporter, did they change on that? And then private judge, I did change the items that Lori and I sat down and talked about, those were actually on version 2.0, so there's really no change from that, from that time.
That's a big check, yes. So, uh, on mileage?
Uh, we'll break it-
Okay, you got it at 15, okay.
I do, we took it down to that, because there was a break that they could use, that they could use the county bill.
Okay.
When necessary. So the next is elections, and of course, it is the same on this year from what was approved in that 24 because of elections.
You only got one versus two?
Yes, so it takes, it takes a load off the expense on that, and I've just got notes in my, in my budget to remind me that those things are person, yours is person. Alright, border register corners, very little change, I think maybe, maybe any shots or something, just a little bit. I guess it's going down a little bit on that company here, and then second one. And everybody has written that one, county attorney's next, it has not changed. Maintenance, I sat down and talked to Fred, and we did feel like we needed to make a couple of changes on this version, I had not had a chance to sit down and talk with him about some of these items, but if you'll look at my line item 199 under maintenance, um, he says that his miscellaneous line that he used there, that I've taken what he had requested at 1200 down to 500. He said he uses that for AC repairs, not when we get a new unit, but just when there's a repair needed, and we've had a lot of that lately. In addition, he says line 230 he's-
Let's talk about that one.
Okay.
Uh, because I don't know of many repairs that we even get done that's under 1400 dollars, most of them's running about that much.
For each repair?
I don't see those bills running, I mean, I haven't seen a bill for less than 500 bucks.
Yeah, I mean, I'm finding the checks. Mitch comes out, he charges a minimum of 50 dollars, no matter what he finds, if he adds three on, he adds a switch here. So what do you wanna make?
I'm just saying, I would, I would make that, but, but also, you can also pull from other line items on that too, and that's what we generally do, you know, if we pull from other line items on that. I don't think we get locked into that, but as we've talked about these HVAC units, you know, this building built 2012, and these units are-
But the one I replaced in Ryan's office last week, um, it come from fixed assets line, and if I didn't have that money in there, anybody got new earlier, because he didn't have it.
Right.
Came from line 530, which is a present improvement on building, and Fred said that we need to have that 10,000 back in here, because he's got some other things that he needs to take the use of this year too, so we'll get to that line and just remove it.
Okay, so, so where we at with this one here, we wanna make it, uh, say 500, 1500?
I think that. Alright, and then when we get down to the repair performed, repairs performed by the other one, which is 230, he said that that's for like repair of the chair lift and things like that, just small other repairs that he might need to get done. So he said that he thought 2500 for a repair, I had it down to 15, and he thinks it made it 2500 in that one.
2500?
Mm-hmm. And then-
Repair by others, it looks like you got 1500 on it.
It's got 1500 on it, he said, and he thinks moving 2500 on that one, so if you are very good with the light, that, that back to 2500. Still down to what he requested, but I think that'll work.
Well, let's, let's think about that, we got, up here, we got provided by others, you go down, and it says maintenance and building improvements, and then, uh, repair, maintenance, building, land improvements, you know, that's 17,000, I'm just saying, most of these things are just running together.
They are running together, they, they're very, I was telling Fred that, they're kind of ambiguous, because you got repairs by others, miscellaneous services provided by others, work, repairs been done by others, those all can just about feed off of each other. I would almost rather it just be one line, it could be a total, that's what we're spending on it.
That's not true.
I mean, if you got enough money to do one unit, it's the budget, you can always come back to this and get one.
Right.
And all this money rolls over, it's not used, it's not, it don't stay in the budget, so, I mean, you can't predict what's gonna go, go out, so as long as we got enough in there to cover this one unit, looks like to me, you know? You know more about that, I'm not a miscellaneous guy, so.
Well, and there's a, there's a, an item that are considered, and add up to 20,000 dollars for AC repairs, but I don't know if that's something we wanna add to the miscellaneous budget, or if that's something we wanna add to- And that was specifically talking about this building, because we got several units that are all trying to go out, but we've had to have repaired, so I did not add that to this yet, because I kind of wanna make sure I understood where y'all wanted to add that to. It's a sheriff's budget.
The units has gotta be replaced, and I guess it's just depending on if we put money in there to replace one, or we got money in the budget, if we had to pull from somewhere else to, to pay for it and then come back and amend the budget, is that what you're saying?
So, I mean, if you, if you know one that needs replacing right now, let's stick it in here, but if we got two, let's stick them in here, but if it says, we're guessing.
Well, we're covering one in Joyce's office, so, so the rest of them-
You got 2911, it's, it's going out slowly, Mitch got 11 month off, to see if they have to be replaced with not too 500 units? Okay, so we, we need to put two in the budget at least.
Let's, let's do that, let's put two, let's put two, my opinion, put two on the 530 line.
And let's earmark it for HVAC units.
Yes, it might be used for anything else, we can do that, and just, we'll keep an eye on it, but Fred also means 10,000 in that 530 line also, for, he said there's a roof repair and extension office, there's, you know, roof repair and gutters at the extension office, and also some socket invasion over window, window AC unit.
The window unit in my office is going out, I'm gonna get a new one, I didn't, normally turn two when they go on sale, and the socket replacement is starting to run out around my office.
In which office?
Around, that's courthouse, my office, the courthouse.
Yeah.
And the extension office, we need to go down where it ended, because the water's running down the basement, the crawl space, you get away from the building.
So how much you setting that is?
Um, I haven't, I haven't got a price on that yet.
So why don't you ask before?
The 10,000 dollar line.
On 530, so if he puts 10,000 in that line, which is what he had in for last year, then you get using from the-
Let's earmark it for that, for size.
So then we're gonna put 20,000 more for two.
Well, at the end of these, your office is probably about a 5, 600 dollar unit, right?
Okay.
And then those gutters, it's gonna be?
Be what we paid for them the other day. If I was to do it, if you hired a company to do it, do the downstairs and all that, you're probably looking at 3 grand.
I don't think you'd get them gutters extension office going for 3 grand.
You'd gotta do more than that.
I think we need probably get a company to do that, because I don't need you hanging off the side of that building, because that's gonna, that way they'll come with a bucket truck to do those, I mean, that on the backside, that's 40 feet in there.
I'll go up there.
So, once you get a surprise on that, and we'll set aside some money for that, put that line back in, earmark it for those, those items we talked about.
I think we could air conditioning units on our 239.
Okay, I mean, there's, there's places that can be done, the air conditioning units.
And just sort of keep that 20,000 separate.
Separate, we'll do that, that's what I'm saying, there's a few of these lines that you can actually use, fixed assets is generally increases the value of your asset, that's the whole purpose of fixed assets. So does it extend the life or increase the value of your asset, that's how you define a fixed asset, so it's whether, whether you want your, it's not necessarily that your, um, air conditions are, are considered that they're really more maintenance type items, so you can easily put those in our 230 line.
So right now, we're adding 30,000 dollars to this maintenance level?
Yes.
Not counting the other two.
We had 1,000 up here, 1,000 down.
I was saying, I was trying to figure out where we're adding.
1144, we're 1144, and then we'd be extra, um-
20,000 for HVAC units, Harry.
Yeah, we had 32,000.
32.
Oh, like 25, that's earmarked as for HVAC, right?
Well, let me, let me go ahead and address this now, that way Fred can hear from my mouth. Any new work done by others needs to have a letter signed off of complete completion, that's not almost completed, but complete completion, we need a letter or a form filled out, that that work has been completed 100%. Okay?
I'm sure we can incorporate that maybe in with our work order.
Well, what I'm saying is, as soon as things gets done, I wanna make sure the filters are back in, the doors, the tape, I wanna make sure, and maybe if it needs to, pop a picture of it, print it, and put it with, that way we know that we don't go back and those things ain't complete. And that'll sort of give you an idea of what, what's going on, and where it's going on that. Because he's, I mean, he's, he's at the jail, he's at the extension office, so when that stuff comes in, you'll get familiar where it is, where, where he's working at.
And if you'll, if you'll use your work order inside off of that, that you go online, check to make sure everything's in place, if the repair has been done by someone else, almost use it kind of like an ad book, and make sure that you go by, and make sure everything's in place before we pay them.
Right.
Because that's, that's your, that's your only way to make sure that somebody comes back if you think they're not paid yet.
Did they figure out that those little switches they putting on is cutting off?
He said they were cutting off properly.
Well, I don't understand why the water runs into the floor if it's cutting off.
Over here, the, the line sets were freezing up, because it had, it had a small leak in the pole, that's why I got a-
Well, I understand that, don't, would it cut off when the fan gets full?
Yeah, it's supposed to cut the unit off, but if you got, if you got the fan on the own position like it was, the fan is gonna stay running, but the unit will shut off.
Yeah, see, I turned the fan on, when, you know, because I called him and I turned the fan on, but what I'm telling you is, is it just kept, it never, the, the water was running over, all over the floor. So what I'm saying is, as soon as that thing comes up, it should shut the whole unit down, right?
It should shut the unit off, but the water still will run out from the lines and everything.
Didn't he set a switch going bad on that?
Yeah, he gave it like, so I don't know, that's weird, you know, it might be too hot.
I'd like to put those pans where it drained into something besides into the floor, I wonder if we put a pump inside of them?
You can, that's what we got in courthouse, is a small pump.
Yeah, I mean, it would make a mess.
Most of them look like a pump.
And then it would cut off, and then it would pump it out, we're not need to look at that, Fred. Okay, so we're, you have something on this one there?
I think so.
You got any more money you wanna spend on?
Okay, um, next is sheriff's office, um, the only thing that we, we need to discuss really about that, unless there's something they've come up with, since the last meeting, is the additional employee that's being requested.
You don't have it in your-
It's in the requested column, but it's not in the recommended column, because it hasn't been approved.
Which one was that?
Out of this line item 113, so if you'll see that middle column, which shows the requested number, under 113, then there's the recommended, that's the difference right there.
And that's also the step raises and everything that's included?
Yes, that is included.
Well, I called three, four counties our size and asked them about that, they do have one person that is assigned to all their-
Evidence.
Evidence, and they said, and, you know, and I just called as an individual, and then, uh- Evidence, and, uh, they said, and, you know, and I just called as an individual, and then, uh. And the other guy, I guess he must know my lawyers, because he's a lot. But anyway, uh, they do have it, and they do have more than just that duty. Uh, that, where they take, where they take care of the evidence, keep the evidence coming through, because it, it's likely just piles up if somebody don't take control of it, so.
Are they an deputy or?
No, they're not. Well, one, one was a deputy. One was a, that, that, and the other one is just, that's his job, but they're a little bit bigger county, not much, about twenty-five thousand.
So you want to put it in or take it out?
I think we need to address the situation. I'm, I'm for it.
Me too.
Why not, the wind blow, so.
I know, but, uh, when y'all, when you make the motion to approve, you'll, you'll have to make the motion, make the motion strum once you approve it.
And there is a resolution on the agenda for next week, for that position as well.
We, we had this discussion another day, we're funding something now to us, but that's where everybody wants this.
The jail is only like twenty-nine thousand more than what was last year, and we're adding employees, so that's pretty good. My opinion.
The reason why, because you can be in back of the car, I mean, therefore, I would buy a car, yeah, right, I'm saying that.
So it's having to be off it.
I parked in the same spot for ten years, and I bought a new truck, parked it there, and the very first time I parked a new truck, I tore the whole front fender off of it. I never run over that old van. So what else on that line, um, any line items? What about the ones that's highlighted from seventy to fifty? All that?
That was just to show you that we did change those, but that's.
Those are things that are changed and are good.
Yes.
Meeting with department, yeah, they're good.
Yes.
Uh, page number twelve.
The jail, there's no changes from version two, that's the check, the highlighted change, right there, between version one and two. Language okay with that, that stuff?
Twelve good line.
Okay, and then, uh, E M A, of course, I've sat down with Crystal, and she's, she's good with these numbers, the ones that changed from the first part.
Wait a minute. Now, what'd you just say?
E M A is good, as far as I know, uh, there's been no changes since the last, last time we met. The personal, I did go through that line by line, so really, I think we're in good shape on that.
We took here the corner, corner?
Uh, the corner's all been changed to what he had, he had asked for, so.
That's the twenty-nine for fifteen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's a yes.
Yes.
Well, we've got many decisions to make here, guys.
Provation line, that's really not changed any, so. Little suspension on that one. Nothing on transportation anymore. Uh, water, soil conservation is the same. Landfill, we changed that one for twenty-seven thousand to fifty thousand, that was a discussion that we had with Lee last meeting, so that's been corrected.
That's correct. And that fifty thousand covers that?
That's, that's what he exempted, but he, he's not sure with the next term's going, he said that would give the inspection part and.
He's doing that in here?
They got a loose and dirt, yeah, I told them. They got loose and dirt, they got some sunk-in places and polluted water and all that.
Okay, um, next thing is the certain services for the indigent.
Yeah, well, they, yeah, so they, well, she could, she could add you to that mark for your, the employee we're working on next week. But it won't be in this discussion. Environmental services?
Okay, next is the indigent. Have that changed, environmental services. Um, we did change from fourteen to twenty-two, I forget when it was this version or last version. But, um, that was because that's what it takes to get the tires hot off, so.
I come to work with comp, that's just an increase. I mean, that's only two employees in that, right?
It's just the rates, it just changes everything.
Is it, is it an increase on all?
Which apartment is it? It's on vinyl. It went from fourteen seventy-three to eighteen hundred and something.
I think one of them was, was coded wrong in the last year, I had to make a correction, if I remember correctly, and I did the audit.
Yeah, I mean, I know, well, just like, well, just like the jail, you're building one for three hundred dollars, and they got a lot more employees. So it was a study last year, now probably.
I think if they, if they wanted them coded differently.
They'll tell you what they, what they were going to change.
On two sixty-seven, uh. At times, if there's a big cleanup, that's gotta be done. I would put a few dollars in there and feed those guys when they go out there and getting stuff, you know, at times, I guess. Jenny uses them to go and clean up big messes. Where, you know, people throw out a bunch of stuff, I'm just saying, I put a little bit of money in there for them to, for sure to have money in there to at least feed them. What do you think about that?
Four hundred?
Let's just say that's five hundred dollars.
You said five hundred?
Yeah, or three, three hundred, I don't care. Just something, she'll have something, you know, you just get, you just get a lot, huh?
What's it cost to feed one dog?
About seven dollars. If, if, if you pay them, is that, you, you tell us, you know?
I don't.
Well, it depends, it depends on.
I don't think that she'd get that out of it.
They give you five in the club.
It's, um, it's almost seventy bucks, like sixty-eight dollars for feeding a dog.
Yeah, that there, that there's the whole crew that, that he carries.
So, five hundred would be?
That would give her five, at least four, five, six cleanups in a year's time, or, I think that'd be good, don't you, Fred? Five hundred.
Exactly, when I work.
I do too. You sure get a lot of work out of it, more piece of chicken. So that's a change right there, Lisa. That, that work release on two sixty-seven, five hundred dollars. Increase that to from zero to five.
Excuse me?
Uh, listen, do we have an account in Ramford? At that cowbowl, what, what do we have that, like, they're just cowbowl?
Yeah, it's not cowbowl, really. I think they're, 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 I thought they're been around, but it's a year ago, I'm assuming.
I didn't know, do they have an account set up? I don't have a account like that.
No, we don't have an account, kind of bull.
That's what I said, I didn't, I have a little use of it.
How much is it for you, Joe, if you pay a relation to it?
It varies, how many we got with us. You, I mean.
All, all reason that is, is, is when they're on the far end of the county and driving all the way back. And then all the way back, you know, it's tough time, he, he drives them all the way back when they're picking up, and, but you gotta take them to the jail, yeah? So, I just didn't know if there's something on there with commission. I mean, that, that, that's really nothing to do with the budget, just something to be able to have an account spaced in different places in the county, so you wouldn't have to drive all the way back. From Hollis, Fruit Hurst, Ramford's a big one. They work all over the county, especially with that sound. They rock in the road, okay. Libraries have been changed. So we're through with that one.
Extension office, they requested, um, seventy-five cents per citizen. So that changed to about two thousand five hundred, their operation.
Haven't changed that in a long time. Never really did a lot.
I just know I've seen more activity from them this year than I.
I tell you, that's Steve, he's good, have you met him, Steve?
He's setting my time up.
Yeah, I mean, he's really, they're really, yeah. I've been on board with that.
There just wasn't, there wasn't a lot. I know he, he has done a little research on it, and even small counties, a lot of them are doing a dollar per capita. And he said, God, that was a bit, too much of a jump, so he just was asking for seventy-five cents.
So, good game.
We move on?
I know.
All right, we'll get into lease items, and then at least already kind of. Again, I said, I'm sort of that person on his side, it's, uh. Of what we got here, we had that one change, that was, um. Uniforms, and that was for some. Some boots, he's trying to make sure everybody can get boots or get ready for boots.
That's a big thing I got there.
For getting returned around.
Certainly, if you get patches for sales or plants, I think. Unicorn is line item, uh.
Two thirty. Two thirty, the ones on line.
Yeah, yeah. The recommended one point two.
He, uh, he brought up about the thousand dollars for. Promotion, try to get employees, I want to put that in here.
Yeah.
Thousand dollars, please, where, what line do you have that for?
Let's see.
Advertizing or what?
Probably advertising would be best, that's why I add it to.
Yeah.
Other times.
That's, uh, two fifty-three.
Like I said, you are editing a thousand dollars in.
No, I didn't, if you asked for it, I didn't, uh.
Well, it's going from fifteen hundred to thirty-five hundred.
He said that was because of advertising, he talks so much finances, you know, he's.
I don't think he had that thousand, I have the, that he had not mentioned it to me.
Yeah, he asked for another thousand.
That's a forty-five hundred?
Job payers and stuff, materials.
He had asked, he said a month ago about five hundred dollars, I had, so he's just changed that out, so.
You can't all do anything inside. So forty-five hundred on two fifty-three. You got that, Lisa?
All right. Moving on, um, triple R. This just is what it is, we, we've talked about that already, and we just use this whatever we brings in, brings in for those products.
Where is that?
Page seven, seven seven.
What about, uh, bottom page six?
Oh, it's just probably how we track it, that's, he spends what he gets in. And whether that gets spent on reimbursement commission for the equipment that's already purchased, or whether it's new equipment, if that's what it goes with.
Can he use that money for day-to-day operations?
See, I, I've understood that he could not, but I think that he can work it, do a workaround, take things that he's purchasing out of gas and purchase it with hundred and three money and use it on.
So the twenty thousand, he said he needs extra for a month, just for the day-to-day.
All in place.
He could, he could make it work out of that. He can't make it.
It's part of it. He's saying everything that he brings in, he's still ground short on each month.
Okay, so.
So he had all his revenues together, and.
But did you just say he was using that to pay his payments on equipment that he deferred that for a year?
He has been, but, um. He's, he's also killing, like, his, his monthly expenses, I think he was including salaries, fuel, labor.
I mean, I understand a lot, and I know from a personal, but I'm trying to find some money.
I, I know.
Because other money got chopped down.
I, I mean, I would, and I.
But if he, if he uses that money to make his payment on equipment, then that frees up that money that he can use. I mean, typically, of all, uh.
When using it, well, that's exactly what we're using it for. Um, so when he got money last time, he used it for equipment and get all the purchases, we used it for the first.
So, we still need to try to dig him up a hundred thousand dollars, or will this right here solve his problem?
I'd have to sit down and talk him about it, because I, I really, I was a, he, he added those numbers up with the hundred, you know, it's costing me a hundred twenty. Or a hundred thousand dollars, just taking my salary.
If he needs a hundred thousand, the six hundred thousand we set aside, we can take a hundred of that and just split it.
Let's put it this way, I think he still needs some money to run day-to-day, I think the hundred and seventy was used for paying for. Equipment that you guys already decided to put more toward on that.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying, so if that frees up, if he didn't need it. Only money he would need would be for a special project, which is in a different line anywhere.
I'll talk him, he knows more about where you can spend a line one thirteen on, and see if we can make that work.
Okay, I'm gonna put a question mark.
On what's our thing?
That makes sense.
On, uh, that hundred and seventy thousand on a plug, uh, plug the highway and traffic.
With about a page six, that, that nice line.
Yeah, that's it.
So we really didn't talk about that, because he didn't have the idea that you were in for the war, so we had, had to strip them off, so. We have not admitted, it's just the last budget, so.
But, but we, that's in the comment. Have we had plans for a resolution on that?
We have resolution for, um.
So you're saying that, that one said, that one said, that he had to, of course, paying that money back?
Yes.
And so we cut that down for a year, if I get to one said, you're on that.
To work with, and that probably will do it. Well, I'll make sure that he's not including that.
I'll put a question mark on it, we can hear if that money.
Okay, um. The rest of that has not changed, uh, the includes right there, so one seventeen, it's just a triple R, um. That includes helping with the salary lines, but this year feels not better, but we've only made one triple R transfer for this one year. We actually made it today, and that's for October's expenses. They prepare a packet that shows us how much they can move for triple R gas loan tax, and it was a. Just October, which was a hundred and ninety thousand, that was like triple R portion of it. So I was able to remove that today, just because he had enough in triple R to pay that, to help bill out the gas loan tax, because it was mighty low, it was small, he's kind of.
On those other projects that he's had, one of them was in question, did we find out that we needed an invoice, an advertise, or just have it on flat?
Um, I sent a message to, um, Kay.
Kelly?
It's actually not Kelly, I know Kat, Kate just doing this.
That's right, she's our attorney.
So, um, Kate, I sent her a message and talked to her about the resolutions that I made for L G C F projects, and asked if there was anything you tried to call me. I actually told her it was a subject she's traveling, and did not have any service, so I got to talk her about that, but, um.
That's something critical.
I asked her if there was any, you know, because I know somebody, he's always hard pushed to get everything done in California, if that's what has to happen.
We don't want that money, you know, to show this by not doing this.
I don't spin around, but I'm glad it's been somebody else, I believe.
I don't think I have any to.
If you give it, it'll work, right?
Yeah. I think what Kelly felt was that this had to be late, so you had to have a contractor approved and ready to go. But you, you double check.
But it's pretty easy to make that scan, from what they've, what they've, what they've.
Well, once you brought up the word invoice, it must be invoice, I just say.
I'll.
What understood?
If I can get, if I can get an answer from Kate tomorrow, I'm probably, she was more pretty responsive, then I'll talk to Kelly, because Kelly, nobody else does.
When I was in that meeting, that's, why I should it was, if the vehicle.
It was what?
If it was vehicle land.
Okay, that's good.
That's what I, what I.
I just don't want to, I just don't want to wrap around our.
I had, I had always been the impression that if it was obligated by a meaning, that there was a resolution passed. There's P O's out there, that you've already got a payment spent, I thought that was far enough, kids that are obligated. And then the funds had to be spent by December twenty, twenty-six, so that gave you time to actually spend everything once it was obligated. But then, I started hearing disversely that the answer was that it had to be completed, so.
Well, I, no, she didn't say had to be completed, she just said had to be late, that means you got to have awarded a contractor.
Well.
But you, you double check.
If it's bad, we don't want another contractor.
So how much money were talking, something, it's just about five hundred milli-thousand?
No, probably, it ain't three hundred thousand, it's two hundred something.
L G C F, oh, it's.
I think Laura's got some, and Robert made some.
Roger's got some, Roger's got a plan for his.
I mean, others.
And, and Laura has a plan for hers, man, too, I've got resolutions for both of those.
Much work should be done, I'm not sure, we could find these things, I think might be going with.
Well, the problem is, is when you have sixty-five thousand dollars to use on a project, that's kind of a big much for a project, so that's, that's.
Probably can do a little bit of leveling and patching.
You, you brought that up, the other one, that we still got? That we still got, twenty-something thousand, that, was it twenty-three thousand?
It's twenty-three.
Lee's gonna use thirteen of it for striping, and wants to use the other ten for bush hog.
Right.
It's a good idea.
And, we got a resolution for that?
I don't, but I can get one ready if you want.
I'll do that for Monday.
Yeah, because he can pick up the bush hog, you know, if that guy's got a.
You're good.
I tried to give him a net down of how much he would have after the, the stripping, but he's smart, didn't know how much to strip it.
When did the bush hog work?
He said, he told me ten to twelve thousand, and he said twenty-two thousand.
Really, how long we got to stand?
He told me he had twenty-three, he didn't take thirteen to strip, he had to, like, oh, it's not working.
Might, might do a resolution up to a dollar of the purchase.
Well, I, I mean, write that down, we can stay on top of that.
So I get through that twenty-three we've been talking about for a year?
Yeah. I don't, I don't want to send him back two dollars, but. Alright, we're.
So. Now we are to, um. Revenue Commission Reappraisal. And of course, her operating fund and her salary fund are all right together. Everything that's tied, it was already changed from version two, it's everything that she and I talked about, so. Will she know if something that needs to change?
You good, Paul?
I'm good. Okay.
It's been just going out to.
Okay, more education, of course, it's not, we don't really have much to say so on that, that's four hundred money. It's actually probably a little more than that, but that's okay. Um. And then we're back to the road department, that's gas loan tax and federal exchange fund money, we're going all in our money. We got.
Are, are we good with the board of education? The board's. All allegations.
Yeah.
Okay.
After making one of them, I think it took ten minutes to pair up.
Yeah, that's.
We promised that we had.
Twelve of them. Alright, where are we at now?
Number one, do you know of anything, she wanted to add. Um. Positions that. Crystal's requested. Can you mention anything else? She did it to me, now I talked to Crystal.
Not yet, we're, we're already, we're, we're already discussed.
Yeah, we are.
Not a test, not a test, how much is it for one employee's benefits?
Well.
About forty percent.
It's about forty, you can add forty percent on top of her salary, roughly. But it, it varies, because it's, it's not just about insurance, which is just a flat rate, remember the salary is, but there's five K, which is the.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah.
Portion of those benefits. And then retirement, of course, is a percentage.
But if they're already in retirement, then.
So we need also up and down on part-time or full-time, on that one employee dress?
I feel a little confused about the whole position, and, uh, Emily and I talked about that a little bit today.
Well, Emily doesn't understand that either, and Crystal says she talked to, to, about y'all.
Well, and she has, but. What her, what her request says, that she has a part-time position going to a full-time position and adding a supervisor position.
The supervisor position would be a dollar more an hour than what somebody's already making.
So it's not.
They, they take it, because it's a, it's a lot, and we got the one now that's our trainer. Who. Yeah, it's a lot, so I don't, I mean, yeah, then she doesn't know, because it would be just like any other position back there, it would be, you'd have to. And she doesn't know if anybody would even take it at this point.
Okay.
So I would say that's not even one of them, I mean, like I said, that'd be about a dollar more an hour.
And then.
For that position, and it's, you know, basically a night shift, it would be, have to be a night shift person, and in my opinion, I don't know that a night shift person would take it.
So, so that's something that we don't even know about, so.
Right, because, because, you know.
Won't she come prison back in?
Yeah, she'll be in this weekend, she'll be home Sunday.
So you can get the Monday morning, figure that out.
I'll get it on it, I, I mean, the only thing that really threw me off is I really thought that I understood what she was saying about, about this whole situation. But then she sat down and met with, um, Emily Brown, working on the. Salary budget, and then they added a line that says open training officer and added a full, you know.
A part-time.
Full-time job, a full-time job, added instead of.
And there, our part-timer gets thirty-two hours because he's covering vacation and sick time and all of that, and. I, I mean, I just wondered, I was asking what the difference is in the benefits side, and we can't, because on the supervisor position, we can't really. Offer that out there until it's approved, and I'm just saying, I'm not so sure that any of the ones. That we have now would take it, because we've always had ones that have been here for years that didn't want to move from night shift, but now that's changing. So.
What, what is on the salary budget right now is you and Crystal and nine full-time employees. Two open temp positions and two part-time employees, and I think that's probably not what she's.
That's not right, yeah.
That's what she.
Can we sit down and get that straight back Monday?
Yeah, yeah.
Because all the thing I knew that we was dealing with was a salary of twenty-two thousand going up to a full-time employee, that's, that's something I don't.
And that's probably, it sounds like that it would actually cover, we'll make sure that.
We have a part-time employee now that refuses to work nights. And, I mean, so that's really how we have to cover until we get somebody trained and.
So, the supervisor that you're looking for for night shift, if nobody takes it, you're not going to hire someone there, right?
No, no, we couldn't hire anybody off the street to do that, I mean, it, it takes years, and it's, it's, a lot of it is, is training and.
So if nobody takes on night shift, then there ain't gonna be enough supervisor.
Correct.
Okay.
Not this score, and, I mean, if they, yeah, and like I said, how do we know, we don't know until we, it's approved to offer it, but I'm just saying, I don't see anybody that we have in that position.
All this is something that we just need to leave out of the budget, then, I mean, they did think this passed later on.
Correct. That's a good idea.
So that what you want to do is, right now is leave it to pass the. Is the recommended amount, just leave it, leave it, and then we'll, we'll alter it if we need to.
I'm not in favor in any department of buzzing in something dumb fist.
Right.
When you pass it, then you can amend the.
That's why I don't put recommend, put the item in recommending column usually until it's adjusted.
Okay.
Just not.
So. So we good on one, on number one?
Yeah, on, uh, recommended twenty-five.
And then.
We'll amend.
If, if, we'll amend it if we go part-time and full-time and if we have.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, so I guess, I guess at this point, the only thing we need to talk about is any.
I got something to talk about. Uh, I can, I can add, I wish one of, is Emily back here?
She's left.
She's gone.
That's her, she's gone in her office.
So is Crystal going to hit, um, still going to do it on Monday, and, because that's too many positions.
Uh.
What she just.
Yeah, yes, and then, and so to get it worked out, really need Crystal to get with her, and make sure to have, have it printed out, so. So Crystal can look at that and see what many employees we got. Uh, on the step raises. Can we address, uh, what we need and what we need to get, uh, to make sure all the department heads are on board to what we're gonna be doing?
Okay, I need.
Frank, can you crack that thing up a little?
Yeah.
I need to know if there's going to be a longevity clause, because the employee's, was originally assessed, the employee's having to be six months. As of October first of this year to be eligible for a raise in conjunction with an evaluation. So, but that six month is not put in the resolution, so I just, when, the resolution either needs to be, um. Added, or we can leave it as is, but there's another thing in there about how long someone is going to be eligible for a raise as of October first.
As of October first. So, uh, when we talked about passing our step raises here, I thought our step raises was each employee's anniversary.
Uh, we discussed that when Roger and I met with Emily, and that just creates extra work.
Okay.
So what, what. What our thinking was, was when the department head does the evaluations, once a year, that's when they do it. That takes, that's less paperwork, she don't have to keep up and call Lee and say, okay, he's a motor operator, operator, next week he needs to evaluate.
Okay.
That's what it comes to the department heads, when they do it.
Okay. I just want to make sure that every department head has that in writing to do that, because I don't think they, nobody knows. Does anybody, do you know, Lane?
Well, I've talked to him about it too, the way it was always done in the past, if you've been here, if you was off your probationary period, you got your raise October first. If you wasn't off probation, you got it when you came off of probation. And that was how historically it has been done.
What we changed? Well, this vote Monday, we're gonna change that.
To.
To you, at six months, you get your probationary period, then you're a full-time employee, and then in six more months, when you get your one year, you're eligible for a step raise. That make sense, I mean, I.
So if we hire some, hire somebody October the second. They'll, they'll all have, will be raised at all until the next October.
Yeah, we'll have to put in a year.
Two Octembers.
Two Octembers.
Two Octembers.
Yeah, they almost have two years in, less two days, they'd have two years in before they get their first step raise.
No.
Based on what you said.
When they get their one year, and the department head can give them raises right there?
So it's, it'll be based on October.
It can be October, because if it's October the second, then it would, and, and, so if they got hired October second, so October the second would be their.
One year.
I think, I think Terry, what you're saying is exactly what Lane just said, that.
Yeah.
If, if someone meets their, their criteria of meeting that one year, and it's in the half of a year, then that person would start that. They, they were off their probation, they would start that. Their part of the.
It's not a year plus the six month probation, it's a year including the six month probation. So if you start in January, you're off probation in June, okay, then by December, you got your one year, or, or January first, whatever, then, then you can eligible for a step raise, so it's only twelve months, then you can get eligible for a step raise.
And then the next year, you're eligible on October first, it doesn't always go by the anniversary, the second time you get it, the first time goes by the anniversary, second time forward goes by October first.
That's what I'm saying, and that's what George was saying.
So we're gonna be doing evaluations for odd higher years at different times, and so on October first, having all of them in to y'all by September, we're gonna have some that are gonna get a, an evaluation in the middle of the year, is that? I, I just made that up.
Only the first, only the first year.
On the first year. That's, that's all I'm asking, so I know what I'm doing, that's right, okay.
The way, the way it is. We gonna pay, we don't try to pay us this clean, the way it is, it's up to the department heads, if you want to wait halfway through the physical of a budget year before you do evaluations, that's on the need.
Right, I, I, I understand.
We leaving that up to the department heads, but if you're a new hire, you gotta work a year.
You gotta work a year, okay.
So, you know.
Well, can we, can we move probation to equalize, I think, is that something that?
Probably hard, hard, you gotta move your probation, I mean, that's.
That's gonna be hard.
I mean, six, six months is.
Is long, yeah.
Most.
Because you have to be a lead cop, you have to be a lead cop in that six months, so.
That's right.
So what is held up in the six months, insurance, but sick time and vacation time is carrying on, being built up, so the only thing they're losing is what doesn't.
They can't use it.
So, we still have to furnish insurance.
That's right.
We still have to furnish everything, so.
Maybe that, maybe that needs to be eliminated.
But I think the six months period may make me let go, or just.
That reason.
I think we just keep it just like that. And then also, if they don't make their evaluation, the. Department head can add another six months to it.
And, you know, Lane can speak on this a little better than I can, but I, you know, that's the, there's just a little bit of varnish that keeps the, uh, elected officials out of that. That two and a half step raise. And, and it'd be better to speak about the omnibus bill and how that works, but it, there's just a little varnish there that keeps us out of receiving that.
Y'all agree on that?
I mean, I'm not. With that.
It's just that, you know, I was feeling in twenty sixteen. You know, they took out all the different varnages and all the different raises, as long as uniform. Elect officials get it all though. Mess with E words, uniform, I don't know all of that nice. Don't matter.
Yeah, Jason, question.
Uniforms are words, I'm looking at it, okay.
Have you got that documentation, you can easily, we can.
I think not, dude, so I don't know.
Yeah, if you don't mind, just send that to me.
But to hide it for elected officials, is, I mean, everybody else is getting on Google that, but it needs a sunset too, because.
Sunset is eighteen years, right? The best, the best.
Eighteen years, I think.
Yeah, elected officials, why they, why they changed in twenty sixteen, don't get anything unless all of them always get it, so.
The way this resolution is, right now with step raises, it's based on format, so if you have one, it's not, it's not uniform.
Yeah, it's a Jason question, and you got, we got one employee that's not gonna give one because they've been here, they've topped out, and they're correct.
Yes, we have one employee that is not, only receives color raises, but he cannot receive, or this position cannot receive, and a step raise because he is hopped out. How did that happen? He came in, and then when they did the pay start, he was good. Um, so, and so we're gonna work him out. So he, like, that position can receive any kind of color base, because color base bumps up the pay scale. But once someone is hopped out, and once someone has got past their eighteen steps, they're getting, they're on a color.
They were reported, like, after writing.
Wow.
I know you.
So we're gonna have, we're gonna have.
I said, my neighbor.
Well, what she do is, she figured out a way to get her to eat. Tell us something about her.
Oh, really? Lane, if you don't mind, if you'll. So we can bring that up in the meeting, in Jason's here. We, anything on the agenda, talking about the step raises, so anything to be amended?
We've got one year delay.
Yeah, because Emily's gotta redo the resolution, I mean, the resolution still is, I'm sorry.
This could be.
Sixteen. That's why.
So that could be amended within that also. Y'all good with that, I mean, and let Jason look at it? And if, and if you, if you, I mean, I can look it up, if you've got it handy, I'll go ahead, we can send it to him. Let him look at it.
Yeah, that's.
Has Jason responded back to what? Have you sent the agenda next week yet?
Send it to Mark. Probably send it.
Let's, uh, make sure we got the manual warning, because we need to.
We're carrying this thing forward till, we should be, we should be Monday, we should do that, right? Right?
Alright, yeah, they, be all.
This. Would y'all like to, I mean, you could, I think we're within our bounds to talk about, this is continuing, but everybody's here, we continued it, so it's also, you can. Talk about like what you want to add to the agenda, so.
Thought y'all were heading on the agenda.
You got the budget already, did you? I have.
But this here's going along, this, this, this.
Yeah, I know, but I was saying for next week, when we meet.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't have voting on the budget on the agenda, is what I'm saying.
What I'm saying is, is you can approve the budget today, on this, but we're still in court, didn't have the budget on it, so come, if you say, we're gonna continue this Monday before, if we get these questions answered. And this meeting wouldn't say we approve the budget, correct? And then, then that whole work session go, I mean, next meeting is, it's gonna be another, it's gonna be, you're gonna have two commission corps on the same day.
Alright, so then.
Same day.
Yeah, I think we need to close, close this one.
And you're saying, continue, we think.
Well, you gotta, you gotta wait till you find out what she's, the, 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 about three things that she's got changed, you know, she give us a clear budget, actually talked to Crystal Monday. And once she gives.
Two on Monday.
Yeah, I'm just saying, we can come in earlier or later, or just say. Cause we got a commission corps. Cause we got a commission call.
Well, this could never regular meeting. Cause somebody might think it's something between down and, and we only got to have that pass by the end of September.
Okay, well, we, we move forward.
Hey, we have a work session Monday and then the two week fair regular meeting. We're easier, right? Let's see.
Let's get to the calendar.
Regular meetings Monday, right?
No, no, that's work session. No.
No, that's what I'm saying. We're gonna have two commission boards on Monday. Every, every week. So you're, you're saying we need a whole.
No, Monday's regular meeting is.
Okay, and then we're just continuing this meeting before that meeting and we'll close this one. And then we're standing for our rest of mission. Is that okay?
I'll get some, I'll get some budget. You got some, you got some things on the budget. I mean, you got some things filled with like step raises that were failing budget, right? I don't think you want.
Some of these items are a fake. Well, the step raise thing is, is just about the timing of how those are gonna be, how it's gonna be put in place. We've got an amendment to that. So it really doesn't affect the budget. It was added to the budget already. Step raises were added to that.
The issue with number one, though.
The issue with number one, if that worked out.
Well, you wanna say for Thursday then? Or we just come back Thursday and pass the budget?
This Thursday?
No, next Thursday.
I got so much.
Doctor man.
I got something with crap going on. I need to donate some relatives to somebody.
No, that much money's gonna be.
I tell you what we could do is we meet, we meet Monday right at four thirty. We can pass the budget and then we, we can continue this meeting to the meeting, uh, continue it uh right after we close that. Next meeting, you can pass the budget. Does that sound good? That make sense to y'all?
Yeah, we can continue it. If there's still issues, we just continue it on a Thursday.
So what?
We'll continue this meeting. We'll get somebody to entertain a motion. We continue this meeting until the sixteenth after our regular meeting. And this is just to pass the budget. After we get everything answered in the regular meeting, y'all can decide whether or not to pass the budget.
I make that motion.
I'll say it. But I can't meet next Thursday if we gotta do that, so. But, but you. But most likely you'd be able to go right into a continuing meeting.
Cause Crystal will be back Monday.
And pass the budget. All right? All in favor of saying no?
Uh, I get it.
Meeting's.